You just moved my, uh, my cheat sheets. Hang on. There we go. All right. I'm going to call to order the special meeting of the City Council, City of Pearland, Texas for April 19th, 2021 at 4:30 PM. Moving into our agenda, um, I guess we are doing invocation and pledge, special meeting. All right. I'll do an invocation. Mayor Proton, would you mind doing our pledges? All right, all right. You'll rise. Heavenly Father, we just want to come and first just take a moment to stop and reflect and, and thank you for the day. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the city, our staff, the great citizens that, that provide us the opportunity to be here and discuss the business of this city. Father, I just ask that you be over deliberations, not only in the special meeting, but in the multiple meetings through the evening. Be with all of those who are traveling around and being on their way here. Father, just continue to keep us safe. Heal those who are inflicted with this virus and protect us from the continual spread of it. In Jesus's name we pray.
Join me, the pledge to the United States flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right.
As member Owens would say, ain't that the truth?
Moving forward, we have a roll call. We have, uh, council member Carbone, Mayor Protem Hernandez, council member Little, council member Perez, and council member Owens present in the chambers. Looks like council member Cam Carr is online and council member Orlando is absent from the chambers as I understand. He'll be here in a little bit and will put his time in when he gets here. Um, moving forward, citizens comments. I saw a flurry of citizens earlier. Uh, Madam Secretary, did we have a citizen to speak online or otherwise for this?
Not for this meeting, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah. Got to keep me straight. We have too many meetings tonight to make sure I keep it straight. So, all right, moving forward into new business. Uh, council member Carbone, would you place new business item number one on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R 2021-80. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're into staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. To use one of Joel Hardy's favorite words, this is a very perfunctory item. The, uh, states requiring that we designate specifically the name, uh, for the signature in this particular criminal justice grant doesn't change the, the terms. It's just a paperwork thing that they require upon their review. Nothing to add.
Seems simple. Uh, any questions, comments from council? And no one moving in that direction? Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr? Member Cam Carr?
Froze. There he is. Didn't hear you.
Member Cam Carr, we did not hear you.
I'm here.
Your vote, sir?
Sorry about that. We're having technical difficulty. Am I, sorry about that.
And your vote, sir?
Uh.
New business item number one. This is about the criminal justice, uh, assistance, uh, grant program where we had to designate, uh, authorized official on it.
My apologies, Mayor. Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries six to one to adopt resolution number R 2021-80.
All right. Moving forward to new business item number two. Council input and discussion regarding an indoor sports facility feasibility and economic impact analysis or debate. Uh, there's not an action item on this. This is just a workshop. So with that, I'm going to kick it to, uh, Matt Buchanan with our EDC.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, so today we just wanted to follow up with you on our indoor amateur sports facility feasibility and economic impact analysis update.
Matt, while you're getting things situated there on the, uh, on the screen, uh, just by way of, I guess, setting this item up and why we're here in front of council, uh, this was an item that, uh, obviously, and we'll go through, it was in the Pearland 2020, uh, plan from several years ago. And I know two or three years ago, it was brought to council and council decided to, uh, to not pursue at that moment, uh, you know, the, this opportunity. Both myself and council member Perez, and I'll let him speak for himself, uh, thought it would be good to bring this item back to council. Uh, there has been some additional work done by the EDC on feasibility analysis, both indirect and direct, not just direct spending or direct benefit. So I wanted to update council on both the direct and indirect benefit that they'd been doing. Uh, and so we thought it would be good to, uh, get council's input, prior to EDC moving forward with any other direction. With that, I'll let council members speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, not to dive too much into the details, but, um, I had not lost track of this after the vote was defeated, obviously. Pre, as, as I'd stated before, it was a project that I was very interested in, but the finances at the time, uh, did not seem attractive for Pearland after some discovery. Um, and working with EDC staff and, um, talking with others that are in this industry, um, some, um, some information that Matt's going to present, uh, I'm sure, uh, kind of, um, came, uh, uh, elevated and kind of explained, you know, some of the other ancillary, uh, financial impacts. Uh, I was kind of convinced that it's worth, uh, additional exploration. Uh, stalked, talked with P E D C, talked with Matt, talked with others, um, and eventually got us to a point where we are today, uh, where EDC has been, uh, updated on some modifications to, uh, the initial study. The study's been updated. Um, and while I won't present what the findings are yet, I don't want to take any, um, any gas out of Matt's engine there, but, uh, I do think that, uh, it was worthy, it was in a position where it was worthy for me to request, along with the mayor, for Matt to re-present. So, uh, Matt is not coming here just, um, and EDC is not presenting, is not presenting a defeated item, uh, for no reason. It was really just for the, at the request of the mayor and I to have them re-present, uh, for reasons that we think are, or for changes in the conditions and some updates to the report that we think are worthy of additional consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate that introduction. So, uh, just as, uh, both mentioned, uh, this was a, uh, priority in our 2020 plan and it was really just to give you background was develop a multi-use event center. There wasn't really a consensus at that time back in 2013 or 14. Uh, just a lot of people thought we needed to do something, but there was no specific thing about, I think everybody had different ideas of what they wanted to do. And so it's also a, uh, you know, a Pearland prosperity, you know, to be a community of choice of greater Houston, ensuring Pearland's quality of life and quality of place can attract, retain diverse individuals and families. Um, and obviously we think this all plays towards that. And then we do have the strategic initiative in there to, you know, advance catalytic, uh, anchor projects, which is would be, and then in, in the parks and rec plan that you just adopted, uh, also has a, a mention of this in here. So just going back, and this is in that, uh, background and summary that was in your, that is in the AR packet, uh, but in 2017, we hired a, a firm called Convention Sports and Leisure. Uh, they came in and, uh, started with us. It was unique. They said, most people come to us and say, hey, we think we want to do this or this. But we said, you know, we don't know exactly what we want to do. We want to go through a process to figure out what would be best. So, uh, a lot of study, uh, looked at different types of facilities, but you know, came down that we wanted a facility that enhanced the quality of life of the community, served as a community resource for our residents, uh, generate economic impact, uh, and drive tourism, hotel room nights. So we looked at a whole scope of facilities, uh, you know, everything from a arena that people talk about a lot to various convention, hotel-based, uh, expo, multipurpose. I know there's a lot of people that, you know, my South County has a, you know, a facility that maybe we could have one up here, performing arts, amphitheaters, amateur sports, indoor and outdoor, um, and looked at all those wide things. Visited with the school districts, many residents, arts people, uh, they did a whole, uh, group of various, uh, group meetings. Key is all these facility types, we, you know, require some level of, of subsidy. Most all these facilities are not going to be, you know, financially sustainable by themselves. But at the end, we came down to two types of facilities. It were the highest level of, of unmet market demand and would be most supportable, uh, in our market. Obviously, we have a huge metropolitan area that has a tremendous amount of facilities, not to mention, you know, NRG and the complex we have just to our north and downtown. Uh, so the two that they came back with were an indoor amateur sports facility and a hotel conference center. You have all these slides in, in, in front of you. I put them, uh, at each of your position because it's not, uh, going through very well. Uh, so then after we did that, uh, you know, this, the indoor sports was the most cost to benefit ratio for the public and had the highest level of economic impact. And one of the things was indoor amateur sports, uh, facility required the least amount of subsidy. Most all these facilities require some. So then we went out and did an RFQ, uh, in 2018, uh, got proposals, did interviews. Um, and then on the call today is Eric Sullivan, uh, and Evan Elif, uh, with Sports Facility Advisors. Uh, we, uh, brought them in, uh, went under contract with them, uh, to both look at a market analysis versus facility and then did a detailed pro forma, first determining there was a market here, what rates we could get, um, and then, uh, did a detailed pro forma. We visited with AISD, PISD, the Y, Parks and Recs. Obviously, we're trying to, you know, supplement the programs that are already offered in the community and obviously alleviate some of the programming space constraints that we now have. But this facility would be for, you know, basketball, volleyball, wrestling, gymnastics, dance, cheer, pickleball even, uh, and then would have the ability with turf to have indoor soccer, baseball, football, all for training and practice, uh, in this, uh, facility. So after we did that, we came and presented to council, little, almost over, a little over two years ago, I think now, uh, and council at that time said, as, as member Perez, uh, mentioned, that they didn't want to, you know, do anything further at that time. So then, fast forward, uh, just recently, uh, you know, we had a group that came before us, um, and looked at, you know, what else, uh, different financial structures and different public-private partnerships we could do. Um, talked about, as, as member Perez said, when we looked at our last, uh, evaluation, we did not look at direct, uh, we looked at the direct impact of it. So someone goes in, spends a dollar, that dollar's in that facility. We didn't look at indirect impact. So that person then goes out, that employee there goes out to a restaurant, you know, that's indirect and that restaurant worker has money that came from that worker and, you know, you start to spin around or visitors that are out. So we wanted to look at indirect too, not just direct, uh, which obviously gives you a, a broader picture of the economic impact of the facility. And, and the facility would be both a local programming model and a sports tourism model. And so in this model too, we took it and made it a little bit more sports tourism related and, and as much local. It's still a significant local during the week and Eric and, uh, Evan can talk about that. So after presenting this in February at the P E D C board meeting, uh, they voted to present that they thought it would be the next best step, as the mayor said, to present this to you, uh, to get your input on whether we should continue to explore the feasibility of that. Um, and we'll talk about next steps. So I'm going to turn it over, uh, to Evan and Eric, uh, and they will, uh, kick it off. And I think we're going to give them, uh, control of the, uh, presentation.
Yeah. And as they're, uh, as they're getting lined up here, you know, the idea here with this kind of a workshop setting, Matt giving an introduction to, to where we are, these guys will give a, about a 15 or 20 or so minute, 25 minute presentation on the feasibility. And that gives us the opportunity then to ask questions, comment, uh, later. Our goal obviously is to, to have this done in time to take a break before our 6:30 meetings kick off. So, um, you know, six-ish, we want to be shutting down. So just trying to set expectation levels.
Evan, go ahead.
Thank you very much, um, council members, Matt, and, uh, the public who are, um, going to be doing this. Thank you very much for your time. We certainly appreciate it. In the next, um, 20 or so minutes, we want to provide you with a quick overview of our companies and I'll let my, um, colleague and business partner, Eric Sullivan, do that. And then I'll take over and talk to you about some of the insights and the drivers, uh, to the updates that we've made. We will actually take you through a summary level of the pro forma, the facility that we've recommended, which will include the facility size, the opinion of cost, and overview of the financial performance, and an overview of the economic impact. And then because we did a study previously in 2019, we wanted to compare and contrast what those changes that we've made, um, reflecting market and also operational strategy, um, and to compare and contrast the 2019 results from the 2021 results. And then, uh, we'll turn it back over to Matt for potential next steps. And of course, answer any questions that you've got. Eric?
Yes, thank you, Evan. And, uh, I echo Evan's sentiments. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the community of Pearland and also for this presentation. Just to give you an overview, background of, um, who we are, we won't spend a whole lot of time in this. We'll jump right to the meat, but we want to make sure that you understand, um, some of the research, the credibility, knowledge that's gone into, um, providing you with these overviews. So SFA was founded in 2003. Since that time, we've served over 2,000 communities. Um, and the work that we do related to, um, new product development often includes the feasibility studies, the business planning, the economic impact analyses of these types of projects so that we can make good recommendations, um, to leaders and to stakeholders to bring the very best projects out of the ground. We're the only strategic partner to the International City Managers and Mayors Association related to sports and recreation. Um, and we've served, I think the number is now over $12 billion of these types of planned and developed assets. In addition to SFA, um, SFD is our development arm. The way I like to, um, describe that is we are not developers, uh, in the more traditional sense, but we provide services through the development cycle to help bring projects, um, online, on time, and on or under budget. And so with that, we often help to provide the AECT, the architects, the engineers, the contractors, uh, with support during the venue planning and during the FFNE or furnishings fixtures and equipment procurement, uh, of the project. And then last but not least, um, SFM is our management and operations arm, where we are, um, not just, uh, consultants or, um, feasibility study experts, but part of the, uh, well of experience that we draw on is being in the business of day-to-day operations and running these venues. Um, so we're actually, um, over a thousand full-time staff members spread out across the country in the facilities that we manage, where we help to hire the staff, train the staff, and serve as a single point of accountability, um, for those projects. And what's most impactful with that is we have a network of venues that we work with across the country where we can, um, help to solicit the tournaments, the events, the programming, um, that oftentimes makes these facilities a success. Um, right now, SFM is the largest network of privately managed venues, um, in the country. We have over 27 locations right now that we're actively serving with more coming online. Um, and we've done a tremendous amount of work, um, in Texas. And so we've got two newer venues coming online, um, in Texas currently, and we've worked with some, a number of communities, um, to help bring a number of assets online in Texas specifically. Um, the role that we play through these projects, um, again, I don't, uh, share this to, uh, to, to, to push anything forward other than what's exactly right for the community, but I think the focus is, is that we have the ability to help deliver this, as we like to say, from concept to concrete. So certainly right now, uh, we're focused on SFA where we have done this work, um, and the updated study, uh, that will be presented on tonight. And then, um, should you choose to move forward, the project that we've discussed with Matt, um, you know, it would be our pleasure to help to serve wherever needed, um, to bring this venue, um, online in the appropriate scale. So as that works through development, uh, management, inclusion in the network, we're certainly here to help where appropriate. Evan, do you want to take us through some of the insights and updated model information?
Yeah. Thanks, Eric. Um, so with that said, now that we've sort of told you who we are and what we do, I want to share with you what we did for Pearland as we went through this, um, update exercise. And so the first thing we did was we analyzed the market factors and we talked, uh, with your team to make sure that we were representing the most impactful operational strategies. And then we updated our analysis, which is what I'll get to in a moment. But just to give you a high level overview of what we found through that process. First, related to the market, um, you, you already had very strong demographics and socioeconomics and growth. Obviously, you're a booming city, already well-established, but phenomenal growth trajectory over the next several years. And as you would expect, because that phenomenal growth trajectory has already, uh, you know, been in place for a couple of decades and continues to grow, your demographics and socioeconomics have continued to improve since the 2019 study. Now uniquely, um, to this point in time, but not unique to your market, we actually do recognize that there are fewer existing service providers in the market and that's, um, in part because of the COVID interruption. There's just a lot of, not only facilities, but also operators that have either consolidated what they offer or they won't be coming back online. And that's a benefit to a new facility as we would expect here in Pearland because it means that while your local demographics and socioeconomics have gotten better and your regional opportunity has improved, you actually have fewer competitors now that are actually operating and fewer planned competitors going forward. And then, of course, um, as you would expect in a market like yours, the cost of visiting has increased. Not a lot, but by 3% over the last two years, uh, which does actually outpace the national growth model for cost of visitation. And we've reflected that here. Now, equally important, not just modeling the changes to your market, but also the changes to the strategy and the climate that we would be, um, you know, bringing this online and, and you would certainly have, um, your choice of operation, but the operator would be serving. Um, we've recognized some opportunities to grow and expand portions of the facility and then contract other portions of the facility. One of the primary drivers today in the 2021 model is that we did expand the number of courts. And as we learned more about your goals and what would make this project truly successful, uh, based on your current goals and expectations, we added two basketball and, um, four volleyball courts. Previously, the model, and I'll show you in a little while, was six basketball cross-lined with 12 volleyball courts. And in today's model, we're recommending an eight cross-line with 16 court. So we've expanded the number of courts and of course, the capacity of teams by 33% from what we were modeling in 2019. And we believe you have a strong opportunity to fill that on a regular basis. We, of course, modeled the market factors and reflected those. And then, in order to maximize economic impact and direct spending, um, which of course is a benefit to your community, we've modeled a cap on the number of local teams that could participate in tournaments and events. But I do want to reiterate what Matt said here at the front end. This is a blended model of local recreation and sports tourism. Local recreation would be available, um, certainly Monday through Thursday, almost year-round, with the exception of some events that may expand more than Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then, of course, non-tournament weekends. But on tournament weekends, the focus has been and will continue to be, um, if you move forward with this project, to bring as many non-locals into the market as possible while still supporting local needs and local teams and local desire to participate in tournaments. So those updates are meaningful. And finally, um, we added some to our analysis, a day-trip visitor analysis for those people who are going to be, um, not local to Pearland, but not from a distance far enough away where they will reliably spend the night. And so that is a driver of some of our numbers. Um, and I'll talk to you a little bit about what we consider to be reliably spending the night in terms of drive time distance. We also added that indirect spending analysis. Matt alluded to that as well. Um, and so that's included in the new projections. But as you'll see in the 2021 comparison to the 2019 study, we've also gone back and retroactively added indirect spending based on the same formulas and analysis, just so we've got a little bit more of an apples-to-apples comparison. But without further ado, let me, um, take you through what the facility in 2021 is recommended to include. So it's a hard structure, uh, as, as I think you would expect in your community. It's about 181,000 square feet. I mentioned before, eight basketball cross-line with 16 volleyball courts. That space in and of itself is a little more than one-third of the total hard structure space. We also have recommended a 40, uh, excuse me, a 40,000 square foot turf field, which will have primary advantages and benefits to your locals, although it will create some additional event capacity. And then, uh, we believe strongly in the fun factor. You know, if you want to maximize the number of people who are visiting your facility, it can't just be about courts and people playing on the courts. It has to be something that's attractive to the family who's going to visit from out of town to make sure that little brother and big sister not only come, but they have a great experience. And so we've got a 6,500 square foot, um, play, climb, and adventure ropes course area, something that keeps people active, but adds this fun factor for the non-competitors and frankly, for your local population, for people who want to be involved in activities at the sports center, whether that's through birthday parties or summer camps or just local recreation, but aren't themselves interested in some of the traditional team sports, which would be most appropriate for the courts and the turf. And then finally, flex space. Um, those are your restrooms, locker rooms, uh, excuse me, we don't have locker rooms, but restrooms, um, management offices, classrooms, which are multifunctional space. They can be team rooms on weekends. They can be, um, used for local programming, sports and non-sport-related during the weekend throughout the year. And then importantly, a model which, uh, we identified the opportunity for back in 2019 and continue to believe, uh, not only based on your market, but also on our experience, that this is actually a conservative level, but a total of 15,000 square feet of tenant space for some combination of sports performance and a medical service provider, which, uh, those two components are in almost every single one of our facilities. And with that, we've got a total site requirement of 13 acres. Uh, that does include the indoor, the outdoor parking, which we've recommended in 726 spaces, as well as the setbacks and green spaces necessary to make sure that this isn't just a parking lot with a building, but something that is appealing and fits frankly, with the culture that you want and the experience that you want for people coming in to Pearland. So, uh, there are details and from this point on, I'm going to, uh, kind of glaze over a lot of the details and give you the summary level. But just know that within the full pro forma, if you haven't gotten a chance to review it, there are extreme details behind each one of these summary line items, hard costs being the cost of the structure itself, um, as well as site development. And then, uh, you know, you've got your specialty sports equipment, uh, your flooring, your turf, et cetera, furnitures, uh, fixture and equipment, and then your soft costs, both associated with construction and operations, as well as the recommendation that we do talk at some point about a working capital reserve, but that is a conversation that sort of comes in terms of how you want to structure this and what financing mechanism you want to use, both on the front end and as an ongoing support mechanism for the facility. So in total, that's a $39 million project that yields these results. So I'm going to start with the financial performance and an overview of revenue. Now, again, each one of these lines has extreme detail in the pro forma. In fact, they all have their own profit and loss statement. So whether you're looking at soccer or birthday parties or anything else within this, there is a page dedicated to how much you should charge, to, uh, what the competition is charging, how many sales you can get, how many times per year you can offer each one of these events. To simplify some of this in terms of where the dollars come from, we've got a lot of local recreation programming, your indoor turf, as well as your courts, plus your youth development, your birthday parties, your corporate and group events, those that are serving the locals, as well as several lines dedicated to actually hosting tournaments and events. From a revenue perspective, this is a small portion of the pie, but it is the driver of the economic impact. And then finally, your ancillary or supporting revenue lines, including food and beverage, which in almost every one of these facilities is a top three, if not a top two or a number one. which in almost every one of these facilities is a top three, if not a top two or a number one revenue driver. A small retail component, not with dedicated space, but those components that are applicable to sell primarily through your lobby, but some of those opportunities to capitalize on people coming in and then needing some light equipment, some forgetables, and then some tournament specific retail items. We've got the tenant revenue line and then secondary revenue, which is really related to sponsorship and advertising. And so in total, the revenue generated through this 181,000 square foot facility is about $3.2 million in the first year. And then will mature, we take a conservative approach to projecting maturation, taking that out to really four to five years. And you'll see that those numbers mature to about four and a half and then up to 4.7, 4.8 million dollars. In reality, the target for the operator would be to hit those numbers sooner and get to full maturation earlier than year five. But certainly, again, within our conservative approach, that's the way that we outline this. So with each of the revenue items, there's also a cost of goods sold or COGS, as you see them up here. But those are the variable costs and the direct costs associated with servicing that revenue. And so for that 3.2 up to 4.8 million dollars, that will be about $770,000 in year one, up to just under 1.2 million dollars by full maturation. And that leaves you with the gross margin, which is the amount of money left to cover your overhead expenses. So starting with the overhead expenses, we break those down into four categories, your facility expenses, which are the costs of operating the physical asset itself. Your operating expenses, which are associated with operating the business that happens within that. That's where your advertising and insurance, et cetera, would would take place. Your management payroll, which is the administrative level or the the management level staff, your full-time staff, as well as those staff members who are not directly tied to revenue, because those are cost of goods sold, but instead tied to services and general administration. And then, of course, payroll taxes, benefits and a bonus line to make sure that those employees are not just counted as salaries, but the full cost of employment is included. And so what that leaves us with is EBITDA, which is operational cash flow. That's the revenue minus the cost of goods sold minus the operating or overhead expenses. And that's a positive operative operational cash flow of about $580,000 in the first year, up to 1.33 million dollars by year five. Now, one of the items that we've been asked to include in this below EBITDA is both capital replacement. So making sure that you've got an amount of money that's put aside on an annual basis to ensure that when you have major capital improvements, you've got a fund that you're drawing down for that, as well as the debt service associated with that $39 million. Now, that's a model that obviously will change as we determine the financing structure and funding structure. But for the time being, we've got that debt service structure at about $2.2 million per year. And if you take a look at those expenses, but then add back in the analysis of new tax revenue generation, we get to what we call the net financial impact. So that's operational cash flow or EBITDA minus capital replacement, minus debt service, and then adding back in the tax revenue generation that comes from the economic impact, which I'll cover in just one moment. The net financial impact of this, and Matt alluded to this from the beginning, will require an ongoing subsidy. However, one of the unique things about this opportunity in your market relative to certainly not all of the communities that we work in, but many of them, is that your local needs and your local opportunities paired with your great opportunity to bring in tournaments and events and generate revenue off of that does make a significant payment towards that capital replacement and debt service on an annual basis. And so while overall, there will be a subsidy required if you include your capital replacement budget and your debt service in the operating budget, that gets all the way down to under $700,000 per year by the time the facility is fully mature. And so the trade off, the reason that you would do this, if you're looking for economic impact, is that economic impact or the amount of money that's brought in from people who would not be in Pearland, but for the tournaments or the events that are run at the facility. And so two slides here, the first is showing you in that top box, the number of events per year. And so while basketball and volleyball will be primary drivers, the reality is that in a market like yours, with so much participation and so much opportunity, you may decide to replace one or several basketball tournaments in any given year with other opportunities. Because this facility between the courts and the turf will have the ability to run a tremendous number of tournaments and events. So yes, that's basketball and volleyball, but also cheer and dance and gymnastics and wrestling and pickleball and badminton and any number of other uses, including just recognition of the space as a large, column-free, high ceiling, well-lighted space. And so in total, you know, you won't have 16, then 18, then 20 exactly tournaments in your first three years related to basketball. Those will ebb and flow a little bit, but in our conservative approach and prioritizing basketball and volleyball, because they are your largest opportunities, plus layering in other tournaments and events that can be run, we have a really good schedule of weekend tournament utilization within this complex. The second and third boxes within this slide are related to the amount of money that people will spend when they visit. And so as you've seen previously, we start with the overnight visitors, those that come from more than 90 minutes away, based on statistics from our real world operational experience and our industry as a whole. People coming from more than 90 minutes away will spend the night. And so those people have expenses related to lodging, dining, transportation, entertainment and attractions, retail. And then, of course, there's a miscellaneous other category. But in our analysis of your market and the cost to visit, which includes the cost to stay at a hotel and the food costs and several other expenses that we look at, it's $146 per person per day on an average. And now, as I mentioned before, there are people who would not be in Pearland but for these tournaments and events, but may not spend the night. And so we've also added that third box at the bottom, which is the spending that would not be in Pearland associated with day trip visitors. Those are people who are non-local, but would not spend the night. And so, of course, they have zero expenditure on lodging and accommodations and a significantly reduced expense or expenditure, excuse me, on a daily basis related to all of the other categories. But still, those people would bring in on average $42.33 per person because of the tournament and event. I should say per person per day because of the tournament and event that they're there for. And so in total, when we look at all of the tournaments and the events, we break down the number of non-local days in market, both those overnight visitors, the $146 and the day trip visitors. We get to a total number of non-local days in market and we use that to multiply by the per person spending to get to the economic impact here on the third box. Before I go into those numbers, I want to bring you to this third line related to room nights. This doesn't translate exactly into the math, but it's a critical component for you to consider as you think not only about economic impact, but also economic development opportunities, where with 21,000 new room nights, up to almost 29,000 new room nights in your marketplace, this could be a driver of additional development related to hotels and then typically, we also, excuse me, we also see economic impact result in, because there's a concentration of new visitors to a place, new developments related to commercial, retail, sometimes office space, residential, et cetera. But getting back to the numbers, as you look at that final box on this page, the economic impact line, you'll see first and foremost that we've broken down the direct spending by both the overnight visitors and the day trip visitors, and then added in the indirect spending. And indirect spending is the, we like to think of it as the recycling of dollars. It's the, it's the money that then is recirculated into your, into your community from the first dollar spent in that direct spending line. And so in total, in the first year of operations, we projected that this facility will generate $15.7 million of new spending in Pearland. I'll use these words again, because I think they're important to reiterate. That would not be there but for the sports center that we're talking about, sports and event center that we're talking about. And as that grows over time into your full maturity and full tournament schedule, getting up to almost $22 million of new spending in the market. And finally, what we want to end with is just that comparison, as I mentioned before, of how these numbers contrast with the 2019 numbers as a result of those changes to your market, the improvements in the market opportunity, the reduction of competition. And of course, as important as anything, maybe more important than anything, the operational strategies to make sure that you are maximizing economic impact. And the way that we project this again, is a conservative level, but certainly makes a meaningful impact. So let's start with the facility. I'll be very brief here, cognizant of everyone's time. Hard structure at 181,500 square feet is about 11,000 to 12,000 square feet more than it was, primarily driven off of the six basketball and 12 volleyball courts converting into the eight and 16 model. We still have the same turf size, the same family entertainment size. We've been able to shrink down some of that flex space, just looking at more efficient uses of space based on real world operations and facilities that we have developed and are in the process of development. And of course, as you increase the building size and the number of parking spaces, we did have to increase the site development. So now it's 13 acres instead of the 12.2 that was previously outlined. In terms of the cost of building, the 2019 numbers were 36.3, 36.4 million. And as you saw earlier, it's a $39 million project at this point. Now, of course, with current construction climate, this, these are numbers that will have to be vetted, depending on when you move forward and the construction climate at that point. But again, we take a conservative approach to start with. So these numbers won't be exactly 38,898,352,000. However, you know, we are comfortable that this is very much in line with the expenses that you'll have. And on the conservative end, and in this case, I mean conservative by, we've taken a little bit of a higher cost of construction than what we're actually seeing in today's real world market. And finally, from a financial, well, not finally, second to last, the financial performance. I won't spend time on the revenue, the expenses, or the EBITDA specifically, happy to answer questions about any of these. But that net financial impact, I think, is an important number as we look at not only operating cash flow, but then the debt service, the capital improvement and the tax revenue generation. This model is about half a million dollars better in terms of net financial impact in the first year, growing to close to three quarters of a million dollars better from an operating standpoint in year five. And then from a, an economic impact perspective, this first box, and this is the final slide here, just for time. The first box here is the direct spending projection. And so this is the same numbers that we used in 2019, but updated for the 2021 opportunity and operating strategy. And as you can see, a pretty marked difference in terms of the direct spending projected, $6 million in the first year, up to about $9 million by year four and five. We layered in indirect spending, of course, from 2021, but we back, backtracked or or reverse engineered those numbers to the 2019 numbers. And so if you look at total economic impact, that's indirect and direct spending. This number improves by 8.8 million dollars in this new model, up to 13.4 million dollars. And so again, great opportunity for you, improved opportunity within your marketplace and additionally, a prioritization of economic impact above all else on those tournament weekends with with some of the strategies that we've already talked about. And so with that, happy to answer any questions or turn it over. Oh, sorry, here's the net tax revenue, this, we isolated this number, sorry. Isolated this number, when you look at the actual tax revenue generation, it's about 160 up to $270,000 more in the 2021 model than the 2019 model. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to Matt for next steps and of course, happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Thanks, Evan and Eric, appreciate that. And so the last two slides we have that are in your packet, and I don't know if we can get back on the screen over here. But you know, so a lot of numbers, obviously, that we just went through and you know, at the end of the day, it's it's about the numbers at the end. But you know, I think this is a facility that kind of checks all those boxes that we started off with, you know, this is a way we can engage the community and provide a hub for sports and recreational programming that is additive to our existing facilities, enhance the quality of life of our residents. And I think as we talk, as we try to mature as a community, what are our, what are our, what's our value proposition to people living in Pearland and staying in Pearland and growing their families in Pearland? Definitely would increase participation in sports and recreation activities, competitive levels of schools and local organizations. Obviously, it'd be a great relief, I know, to our school districts who are overburdened by people trying to utilize their facilities. And then definitely, as as the numbers show, it would become a destination that attracts non-local visitors to Pearland and generates that economic impact through room nights and spending. And I think we can create, you know, an operationally sustainable business model for this type of facility. So what we've talked about for for next steps, and what really what we talked about at the board meeting, you know, if there's council agreement on further exploring this, you know, we're not asking you for a, an up or down vote today or anything like that. But obviously, we don't want to go incur more expenses and more time if there's not some support for for moving forward with this. So we talked about, you know, engaging SFA in their phase three financial support services. They have a very structured, you know, we've done the market analysis, we've done the pro forma. And so the next thing would be working on the financial structure. And that would include many things, but you know, one of them would be visiting with potential partners. You know, to get some letters of intent, you can see there's, there's big numbers on there for tenants and sponsorships and stuff like that. You'd want to go out and get some interest in those types. A financing plan and looking at various, you know, sources of funding, public-private partnerships that we've talked about and how we would structure that. And then evaluate other potential facilities. There are other potential facilities that are people are proposing in the community that are similar to this. And I think we need to engage those and and look at those too. And then, you know, arrange visits for the board and council to go out and look at some of these similar facilities. I think it's a huge benefit, you know. Some of us went up to Build House USA many years ago up in Dallas Fort Worth. They have three or four of these facilities that are just, you know, outstanding. And they're, they were very interested. They were one of our proposers when we did our RFQ process. But you know, going out and look at these, Round Rock has a very similar facility. It's been very successful, done through their Economic Development Corporation. And then, you know, we need to look around. I know the, the question always comes about is where would we build this? Well, there's many different places we could build it. And as part of that process, we'd have to evaluate the pros and cons of some of those. So Eric, I'll turn it back over to you and be happy to answer and look forward to Evan and Eric. And we did, we did talk about the turf model. If you saw the entire slide deck that was in the online packet, we just kind of to speed things along, just focused on the turf today.
Yeah, I think a good comprehensive overview, obviously, for those that have been on council for a little while, this was a little bit more of a refresher because of the previous opportunity to take a look at it for myself and council member Cam Carr was a good opportunity to kind of be brought up to speed from where you guys were a few years ago. I do want to highlight something, and especially on next steps, third from the bottom, evaluate other potential facilities proposed in the community. If if you have taken a look at any pre-development schedule coming up this week, a user who proposed an indoor facility several years back, I think it was smaller in a different location, but had proposed and he is back looking at a potential facility in the 288 and Beltway 8 corridor, right there towards the corner. Larger facility, kind of the similar in the basketball and volleyball side, not as big in the overall facility, but is proposing eight basketball courts and 16 volleyball courts. So that's in pre-development this week. Don't know where that's going to go, don't know where that's and where and how that's going to finalize. But I wanted to make sure that council is aware, there is a private user that's looking to bring something like this into the community. And by his own admission, he reached out to me to let me know from a subsidy standpoint, he would have to subsidize it, the facility itself. So he's actually planning a business park on the backside of it, that revenue from the business park would offset what he would need to do to keep this type of facility running. So I wanted to make sure that council is aware of that. That's kind of happened in the midst of all of this taking, taking shape and taking place. And so I want to, I want you guys to have the opportunity to ask questions and comments, not only on this, but of two gentlemen online. But also just let you know, it might be prudent for us to simply let a private guy get further down the road and see where he's going before taking next steps. Second thing, as I said previously, EDC could go and engage SFA on their phase three without council. Certainly, the the dollar amount is is below their threshold, so they can go and do that. But since this was turned down by council previously, they simply don't want to go and do that unless they hear some type of positive movement amongst council tonight. So with that, I'll go it open to council for questions, comments. Councilor Press?
Thank you, Mayor. So just going over a few things, just talk about what I think next steps are. One, let me first thank Matt. I appreciate your patience with me. Again, I approached Matt several months ago to start this conversation up again after having some conversations. several months ago to start this conversation up again after having some conversations or continuing to have conversations about things that originally just didn't, didn't really lock in with me. It just didn't feel right. So ultimately, I got access to a little bit better information, cleared up some confusion that was there on my end. My, my biggest concern when we discussed this before was simply the economics. And certainly, economic forecast is not my area of expertise. So we went through the presentation, both at one other member and I attended the previous EDC meeting. And we're a little shocked to see that it showed a net loss. And then when presented counsel, it still showed a net loss and kind of substantial. But we had some follow-up questions, but ultimately it just looked as if it was going to be, not going to be a revenue provider for the area. In further discussions, we understood, hey, there was some simplification to the model. There's some information that probably could have been presented better, I guess, for lack of a better term, or additional information that could provide it, it could given us more context. What, once we got to the point where we were talking about those things, no longer in broad strokes, but more in specifics. The economics seemed far more attractive to me, which is why I thought it was critical that we try and move forward with some additional study to take some of the assumptions out of what was being discussed and get more into what, what is the model going to tell us? And then seeing the study, going to EDC, discussing with them, seeing that the finances were far more in our benefit than what I had perceived before. I felt like it was necessary for us to come back and have council have, have an additional discussion or alternative discussion to see. Hey, given all this information, would anybody else's mind but mine also be changed on whether we want to pursue this project? I think the, the other option, or there's other discussions that, that came into play about, you know, funding mechanisms. I don't think, I'm not going to speak for counsel, but I think I, I can make a pretty good assumption that a certificate of obligation funding mechanism for this is just not something we would explore. And I think, you know, a GO bond would probably have some difficulties getting through this body. But it certainly would have some timing concerns. So, you know, the CEO would offer us opportunity to move more quickly. The GO would have us, would give us some opportunity to get a little bit more citizen feedback on whether to move forward. But the timing associated with that would obviously put us in a long delay. There was an alternative that I had discussed and Matt mentioned it about the possibility of doing a public, private partnership with organizations that can fund this for us. And then we end up, instead of having a, a bond payment, we end up with a lease agreement. I think that's worthy of expiration. You know, I don't know if the CO bond is worthy of explanation, other than to just say, hey, it's option, it's an option. But I don't necessarily know that we want to go down that route. I, I'm not necessarily in favor of the EDC being the funding mechanism or taking on the debt through their opportunities. But I do think that, you know, a GO bond where we get citizen feedback and find what we're going to move forward is a good option. PPP, I think, at least in my opinion, is probably a better option. The location, look, we still need a location study, but I think I, I think we all feel comfortable. We know generally where, where we want to locate this. I don't think the idea of that has changed. There are some other options, land that we already own, that maybe be deeper in the city. But we want this to be a location that is accessible, accessible particularly to highways and possibly a primer for additional development around it. I think behind the Bass Pro Shop is probably what we, is what we had discussed before and probably end up being the best location for us, though it's worthy of at least exploring other options. I think we had just talked previously about placing it next door to the, or I had brought up, and I thought it was a good idea for us to place it next door to the Shadow Creek Ranch porch facility. So you have indoor, outdoor combined. But I think some of the feedback that I received was that it's a little too deep into, into the city that the that that may impact our ability to get people to want to come. Essentially, for every turn that we make, there's, we're losing customers. So we get further off of two eighty eight. That just makes it more difficult for us to attract people to come to it, along with the, the traffic impacts it would have to Shadow Creek Parkway. But I think it's worthy of exploration. I'm certainly not a fan, and I know this has been brought up before. I am in no way a fan of putting it behind the town center. There's just, there's too much congestion in that area already. And adding a Saturday volleyball event during the holidays to that area would just absolutely collapse the five eighteen and Business Center intersection. And I don't think that that's, that's worthy of exploration, along with potentially noise issues associated with the the neighborhood that's, that's, that's near that area. So I do think that it's, it's prudent for us, and I think we should provide guidance to Matt and his team that we go through, that we provide next steps. We provide some ideas of how far we want to get down the road. I think we want to go ahead and get this to a point where we can, we can RFQ it potentially for looking for development partners, or if it's the values low enough, maybe select a development partner that can do some additional valuation, do some, a, a deeper dive in potential construction cost. Do some land, a land evaluation and maybe take a look at an high level, what's the, what are the traffic impacts? What are the pros and cons? If we, you know, which, if we go off of Cullen, perhaps, is that, is there a benefit there? If we go off Bass Pro Shop, is there a benefit there? If we go next to the Shadow Creek, but do those facilities actually work in tangent the way, I, I mean, I think from a layman's perspective, it seemed that they would, or is there some oversimplification there? But I do think it's worthy of moving forward. With respect to the other potential development, if it's going to the location that it was proposed before, I, I have no, zero interest in, in supporting that. And I certainly would want to get out ahead of it. I, if it's that location, I, I would not be proud to have people from out of town come in and that's their, that's our front door. If I were on council, I would have done all that I could have to prevent the, the neighborhood, the development that's right next door to it, because that's just not Pearland. Even though it's in our city, it's just, it's, it's not, it's not what we want to present. It's not necessarily what I want people in the community to think what we're about. And no knock to the developer and no knock to, to, to his personal interests, but that's just not something that, that would, that I would support as a community. If it came, I imagine that something like that would require some, some council approval. Not only would I be against it if, because it's competitor or something that we're exploring. I just don't like the location. I think if we have better access and control over it and we can get some public, private partnerships, maybe perhaps he can be a partner to us in, in some way or the other. But if we can get some PP, some PPP on this, we can locate it where we want, we can expand it the way we want, we can put additional options in there the way we want. As Evan had alluded to, you know, we would be looking as a community, as it's just being a community event, to add things that aren't necessarily moneymakers, but would attract more people to want to come. And because we have the ability to subsidize it and focus on the ancillary financial impacts by saying, look, whether, you know, we may, we may be fifty thousand dollars a year in the hole or a million dollars in the year in the hole, but we're bringing fifteen million dollars into the community. That's to us is what we're looking for. So we know we're not going to make money and we're not going to find another way to subsidize it, but we know our businesses are making money. We know our community is growing because of this. I would like us to have a little bit more control over this long term, so we can say, look, let's do this. Let's do or do not do a turf field. That may not necessarily have as much financial impact, but offers us the, the ability to maybe use this in greater seasons. Let's add some kid play areas. So you know, while juniors playing, the third can go somewhere else and not be bored. You know, I, I think that's a, it's an idea worth exploring. And maybe down the road, we can say, look, it's, this is really working very well. Now that we have this going, maybe it's worthy of expanding and seeing if there's some additional facilities we can put in here. Maybe we can make it an indoor space that we can use for for other events, or maybe we want to expand it to add more courts. Or maybe we want to look at, hey, we, we did volleyball and basketball and a turf field, and that's really good. Now let's move on to what we had pre-programmed as a phase two to say, let's do pickleball, or let's do a racquetball or other things. You know, we would just have better opportunity to control something that is our invitation to other people in the city. I, I, I personally think that that's, that's, that's better in our hands than it would be in the alternative. Again, particularly because of the proposed location. So I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Questions, comments?
I, I do have one question. Maybe Evan, if you could just expand a little bit. I was in my brain trying to figure out, can you expand a little bit on the market factors? You talked about why there are fewer service providers and fewer planned providers. Can you just expand on that just a little bit for me?
Yeah, part of our process is obviously to look at the competition and who's operating and what they're offering. And through that, both in terms of the tournament providers that are bringing their tournaments to other places and in terms of some of the facilities that were in operation or were planned for development. Those just through the COVID, through, through the pandemic and the interruption have not come to fruition. In some cases, those were planned. And in terms of some of those tournament providers in, in Texas across the board, but all, especially in Houston, there are a lot of tournament providers that are going either all over the place, or they are centralizing their operations in a single locale. And as the shifts have come and a lot of basketball season was wiped out, the herd has thinned out a little bit, if you will. There are just fewer providers, which opens up an opportunity because players have come back and families want to travel and they're demonstrating that all over the country. But there is now not quite the supply and demand conundrum that you had. And instead, you've got just as much, if not more, demand today than you had, you know, fourteen months ago. And just fewer options to play. And so now is the time for communities, we believe, that are, are well-vetted and going to invest in this to really think about what the immediate term future looks like, to get on board with some of that. And of course, eventually, we expect that there will be a backfill. But the faster that a community moves and the better the facility that moves into planning, and this is not to push you towards that, but it is a reality of the current climate. Those are the communities that are going to benefit, benefit most from this rebound that's already been demonstrated and we think will continue to grow as sports tourism has been a very fast growth business over the last ten to fifteen years.
So yeah, you answered, I guess, what was gonna, my next question is, do you think that what you're proposing is we get ahead of the market trying to catch up again? So it sounds like that's what you're saying. So Mayor, I don't have too many things, but as far as where to build it, I think that's a phenomenal question. I've been thinking about that this whole time and I don't know, you know, the answer to that question. And then as I'll speak to Member Perez's comment on potentially doing GO bond, I also think that while it may be an option, I don't think that that would really effectively illustrate to the, the voters, the ongoing subsidy required, or I think even the just all the things that we discussed here, I just don't think those things are really presented very well on a ballot. But I do think that if we took on debt, that would be the option that I would prefer, though I think, again, it's, it's not necessarily a very good option. So going back real quickly and then I'll, I'll cut out Mayor and let someone else ask questions. But for the thinking about the backfill that you just mentioned, whenever I start breaking down the numbers, if I look at the, the overnights and the non-overnights, if you add those two together, take that average, it's about ninety four dollars per person for the direct impact spending. So that would be, and maybe I'm just doing some quick math here. That would be about a hundred twelve thousand people that you're anticipating and kind of direct visits in the first year. Based on the numbers that you provided, is that and those are, those are users, correct, of this facility? That would be for the casual, like, family visits as well as tournaments?
Yeah, it's less than that because it's not a fifty fifty split. There are many more overnight visitors and there are day trip visitors because they come from ninety minutes and beyond. The day trip visitors, we've only isolated up to ninety minutes, but more than thirty minutes away. And so the actual numbers are in the report. You can add them up, but in year one, it's just under sixty nine thousand overnight visit days in market. That's not people, that's the number of days those people spend. And about twelve thousand day trip visitors. By years four and five, that's ninety six thousand and sixteen thousand.
Okay, got it. All right. And so as we have the other players start to enter the market, do you anticipate those numbers being impacted? Did you build that into your study at all?
Yeah, our standard process is to look at what we don't know in the future and to be conservative towards that. So absolutely, you know, anytime a new competitor comes into place and, and starts operating, you will have to deal with that competition. The key, as much as anything, is because there are warehouses with basketball courts all over the country. It's really about the experience. And so what we recommended here was in combination of the courts, but also the family entertainment center, and frankly, just the market that you have. You know, what Pearland is and what Pearland will continue to grow into, we think those are differentiators for you. So yes, you will have competition. We expect that competition will continue to grow in the future. But planning a class facility and operating it like a best-in-class sports tourism destination with an integration into the experience of what Pearland is, that's what will set you apart. And so the assumptions, make no mistake about it, the assumptions are this is built the right way and operated the right way to reach these, to reach these results, even though we consider them to be conservative by our standards for what we are able to produce. You can't go into this half-heartedly and expect to get these kinds of results. And if you do, you may get them in the first year, but getting people to come back is much more difficult if you don't have that right facility and right operation and right experience.
Got it. Okay, Mayor, I think that it would be, at least for me, I would think it'd be prudent to see what the other option is before I really give a direction to staff. I don't know when that's slated to come before, so if you can give some direction.
Yeah, I've, I've asked staff to go ahead and send out what's being presented to staff in the, in the redevelopment meeting. I mean, this kind of popped up, like I said, and I think the application for pre-development happened late last week.
Well, Matt, before, you know, I don't want to give you a preemptive kind of yes or no, one way or the other, without kind of knowing all the options. So I'll just kind of leave it with my questions there tonight. Appreciate it. This was good. Thank you.
Councilmember Cam Carr took his mic off, so I'll go to him next.
Gentlemen, thank you for giving us your time. I want to dig into a couple of items really quickly here. What is your local versus event or weekend revenue split in your model? What is that normal traditionally? What is that?
In your model, it is roughly, I'm just going to look at year five here. Hang on one second for me. So the, the local, the, the tournament revenue in and of itself is right around, it's a little north of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, that's just for the tournaments and events and use of space, but that is the primary driver of food and beverage of retail and at least some of secondary revenue. And so in total, the event revenue that generates that economic impact is probably closer. And I'd have to get into the deep details in the backend analysis. It's probably about a million dollars of the revenue generating a hundred percent of the economic impact, but a million dollars of the revenue and then the rest would be local.
I appreciate what you're saying. I'm a Texas Aggie. I'm not very bright. I'm kind of slow here. You have to talk slower.
Sorry.
You have to be more broad.
Sorry.
Of all your revenue percentage wise, how much is tied to the, the weekend event basketball? And how much is your local mom and dad playing basketball with their kids percentage wise? I, I'm not even interested in the numbers, the hard number.
Yep, sorry. Sorry, I'll be, I'll be more brief. It's going to be about twenty five percent from a, a little bit more than twenty five percent, call it thirty percent tournament, seventy percent local.
So just, so just so I'm understanding here, if we have ten million dollars in your pro forma, seven million is going to come from what's called the everyday with a Pearland user. And thirty percent or three million is going to come from some out of town person. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And just, just remember, I'm slow here. The economic impact is rolled into that number on the thirty percent. That's not just actual hard revenue from somebody, a, a tournament saying, here's our money for hosting.
No, that's the, the revenue that I just gave you, seventy percent revenue from locals, thirty percent from, from visitors. That's within the facility.
Okay, so that's not economic, that's not dinners and hotels. That's just hard dollars into the facility.
Yep, spent inside the four walls of the facility.
Okay. And so the economic impact now, that's, that, as Member Perez said, that that's kind of what we're going at. I'm assuming now that number is inverse, correct? That the economic impact that we are going to be feeling from this is going to be seventy percent from people coming outside the neighborhood or outside the city, correct?
100% from people outside the facility. We don't, we don't count any local spending at restaurants as being new. They, they would have been there.
So you don't, they don't go get a burger after they go play? You don't, you don't calculate that? And that's not something that you depend on?
They do that, but that's not new money into your economy. So we don't count it.
Okay, great. That, that just, that clarifies for me. You've got a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
I'm a, I'm a pro forma junkie and I just don't know if this is fun with math. And you start realizing that there are certain drivers and you just, as long as you understand what the driver is, the rest of the pro forma works itself out. Let me ask you a question. You guys keep saying the word 90 minutes. Do you anticipate knowing where we are? We're essentially at the very south end of our submarket, you know, maybe, maybe you call Mandeville the end of the, the NSA, so to speak. Is, is Conroe or folks in Conroe willing to stay over here overnight? Am I thinking Huntsville and beyond if we're just using that, that more south alignment?
If you bear with me one second, let me pull up. Let me pull up some, a map here. I'm not going to be able to show it on the screen. But if I were to look at it from what we did previously, 90 minutes effectively covers all of the greater Houston marketplace and probably takes you about 15 minutes north of the woodlands or so. So.
Roughly Conroe, okay. I just, as somebody who has projects in Montgomery County, I'm trying to get context. Huntsville is, is outside, in my mind, the cone of drivability in a one-day process, but Conroe is right at that threshold. So essentially, everything inside the envelope of Conroe, nobody's going to come and stay overnight. There may be day trip people, but they are not going to be the person who goes and gets dinner and then stays here.
Yeah, and we can provide that map so you can see exactly how we map that out if you'd like.
Okay. And then my other question really quickly here is, you said a term at the end of your answer, built the right way and operated the right way. You guys were operators. I'm assuming if we move forward in alignment, you guys would be more than willing to off, offer your operating services, correct?
Yeah, our value proposition, our promise is that if you said we want to go out to RFP for management, we would apply for that RFP to hit those numbers to meet or exceed them. That's how strong we believe in them.
Understood. Explain to me what your quote-unquote process is on built the right way. What, what does that mean for the general public? I, I know what I'm looking for as a, as a development professional, but tell me what, what does that mean to mom and dad so they can kind of get context on what that means?
Yeah, absolutely. And Evan, if you want me to jump in there, what that really means from our perspective is the functionality of the building is such that we can deliver on all of those different uses. So when you think about this, you know, developing a box is not the most difficult project, but how that functions, how it switches between basketball, volleyball, cheer, dance, that functionality, the way that you position things like food and beverage, retail, entertainment spending opportunities, so that you can create not just a great guest experience with more guest amenities, but also drive a healthier cost recovery or bottom line because of the way that that guest experience flows and people want to spend time in the venue and they want to spend time there for the events. That keeps more spending in the venue versus just leaving. So while I know that we're looking for economic impact, how the building functions is very important. And I'll just finish with this. We really stress that it's about functionality, it's about differentiation of what's out there, it's about everyday uses. So how we diversify the uses, how we create everyday opportunities for people in Pearland is really important in addition to those big events.
Let me give you two very quick, just very concrete, simple examples. You have to have the right space between the courts. People miss that all the time because they're value engineering them down, and then you can't have a sanctioned volleyball event. You have to have comfortable spectator seating. People are gonna be there for four or six or eight hours at a time. We don't want them to sit on hard metal bleachers and have nowhere to go or nothing else to do in the facility.
All right, let me, uh, let me ask one more question here. Does the number that you contemplated, $38 million plus or minus, does that build the right way? Or is that like another $6 million on top of that number?
No, that, that is, that is to build the right facility.
All right, I just, I, I've learned there's a difference between the bare minimum and the absolute, what we absolutely really need. And sometimes you have to ask that question. So.
Probably so.
If the EDC engages you on this phase three, does that mean that you guys will go out and look for the, the sponsors and the tenants and start lining up those kind of contracts? Is that what that means?
Yeah, what it means is that we'll work with you to form the partnerships, whether that's capital upfront, long-term partnerships, program partners, tournament rights holders. It's really about partnership development. And yes, we would lead that process, of course, with full, you know, transparency and, and approval process by you to make sure that anything related to upfront money, ongoing operations, economic impact drivers, any of those components necessary, that they are with the right partner and they are optimizing the operational opportunity and the financial opportunity, not cutting you off short because you gave away too much time at your peak times for the next five years.
Well, I, I learned every one of these groups has their favorite people to work with. I'm assuming there's a couple of groups that maybe make sense as tenants and sponsors that maybe have an affiliation or previous, previous track record with SFA. Would that be fair to say?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Um, I think for the, the council discussion, for Mr. Buchanan's benefit, if the EDC is willing to front the money, I'm willing to discuss it. I think there's, there's a couple of very obvious things that like for our brethren on the council to consider. The, the special districts that we have, obviously in Lower Kirby and in Tiers Two, Ters Two, they are a lockbox of dollars, so much so that the city is, is building a police station, or sorry, a fire station, a gigantic, brand-new library. This would make a ton of sense here in terms of being able to put those dollars to work in a, in a place that makes sense for us and it has a long-term economic benefit. If we were seriously to consider this, I think those two areas would make the most sense and I would probably have a lot less heartburn about. I think we need to have that RFP process. I'd like to see what, what PPP options are out there. The reality situation is we already have one facility in the city that loses a million dollars a year. I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with that. That predates me by quite a bit. We don't need a second. So if there's a public-private partnership out there that is willing to backstop that, that amount, I think that makes a ton of sense for, for what we're doing. I would be in favor of moving forward to the phase three if the PDC is willing to backstop those dollars.
Good deal. I'm gonna move to Councilman Rowland.
All right, thank you. On, on this, are we looking at the city staffing this facility or, or bringing in a management firm to staff it on a daily basis or what?
Uh, within the pro forma that we've presented, and obviously this is all up for discussion, that includes new hires for all of your management positions and it does have an allocation for outsourced management, which is frankly, it's reflective of the structure that we recommend. But yes, that's actually baked into the financials.
Okay, because I'm looking to overhead and things that you have in there and, and looking at that. And, you know, bringing in additional staff to do the work now, over 60% of our budget and general fund comes out for, just for salaries. The other part too, going, if you go out, another level of, of this is a letter of intent, which we all know is not a guaranteed-type contract on there. It may or may not happen. And that's what we'd be betting the 38, $39 million to be expended through there that these people are just gonna say, yeah, we're gonna come or no, we're not gonna come. And to me, that's that this period of time that we're all going through all across the United States, and especially, you know, here in Texas and around the Pearland area too, with this virus and all out there, I'm not too sure if this is the right time to look at spending another 38 million on, on some kind of activity as this, which we see at the first five years, it's a deficit on that. And we went through the same thing with an auditorium through there. And this would come out, meeting that if we didn't generate enough revenue to pay for the expenses and everything on, this would come out of our tax base, which would be another tax on, on the residents in, in Pearland. And that's just a difficult step for me to, to look forward to right now at this period of time. I think it's a difficult situation of everything that's going on, you know, across the United States and everything's uncertain now. You know, and, and when you start looking at it, it's gonna fall back on the residents of Pearland, on their back is what's gonna happen. And everybody, I'm getting calls already about the property increase tax or base that they're in appraisal value. That's all increased. And I know mine went up 18,000 this year. And everybody else is seeing that, that burden here. I talked to some people from the Buzoey County side that says that, you know, it's going up as we go through here. And that's the only thing. I think, you know, it's a, it's a good opportunity. I don't know if the school's been brought into this and is doing some kind of a joint deal with us because we're not gonna be able to go out, you know, and get people to come in. But in, in other words, you know, the, the letters of intents are not contracts. And, you know, there's no way somebody's gonna sign a contract this day and time that they're gonna, you know, use this facility over the next five years to bring it in. So and that, that's just a big concern that I have with it. I just think, you know, it's, it's a time and a place for it, but it's not the time and place for it right now.
Okay, we'll move to Councilman Rowland.
Appreciate it, Mayor. I just have a, a couple of comments. I, I just really, as I like to do kind of with a lot of things, just wanna zoom out here. This was something that was in the Pearland 2020 plan, which of course, right now, we're on the Pearland Prosperity Plan, but Pearland 2020, I think we started working on that back in 2012, so about 10 years ago now. So, so for this long period of time, we've identified, hey, we want to have, we, we want to have this kind of big thing. We want to have this, this cool thing in Pearland. We, we want this thing that's what I think the technical term for cool thing is the, the catalytic anchor of something. But I, I, I think what we know is the reason that we're even talking about any of these is because any, any, any type of project in this space that we would talk about would require some kind of government support. Otherwise, we wouldn't be talking about it. The private sector would have already done it. And so we kind of already know that. And, and so, but I think when we look around, we see that there have been other governments, other cities around us that have been willing to make those investments and, and create those things. So, and, and so they have minor league sports teams, or they have concert venues, or they have hotel and convention centers, all of which require some kind of subsidy. Or my, my understanding is, and then these gentlemen would know more about that, at least from the sports side, but it, these, these tend to require this ongoing subsidy, but they create a certain value that is difficult to, you know, that you don't even see fully on this. But what we do see fully on this is we, we spend $38 million one time and you have a payback period sometime early in year three. And then after that, you know, you're, you're making $22 million a year. The benefits are dispersed to the entire community of Pearland. So they're not coming back to the city directly, but that's why the government's kind of the player that unlocks the value here because the, the value is so broadly dispersed throughout the community. But we ran a full analysis to see what would be the most cost-effective thing, as was kind of alluded to at the beginning of this presentation as I was listening in. We, we ran a, a very comprehensive thing and said, do we want to build an amphitheater? Do we want to build this? We, we did a full market study. What would be the most, what would be the most viable? What, what makes sense in this area? What, what makes sense for Pearland? And what makes sense, most importantly, economically? And we kind of settled on this. So, and, and not settled on this, we, through rigorous analysis, we, we came to, to this being the best option. So I, I guess I would just say like, there are certainly concerns to be made, you know, we don't want to make this kind of subsidy, but, but then I guess it just needs to be said, okay, well, we don't, we don't want to do one of these things. Pearland isn't gonna have one of these things. The, the rest of our neighbors are gonna continue to build these and we're gonna be the place that doesn't have that. And we're gonna wing it and hope that we have enough to, to remain a community of, of choice for, you know, the foreseeable future. I, I, I do think we need to try to get a, a catalytic anchor in here. And so I, I'm, I think this requires so much more exploration and would require so much more to, to dig into. I'm not gonna sign off or commit to anything, but I, I certainly think it's worth more exploration.
All right, I'm gonna move to Councilman Rowland.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, otherwise some of us may be going to bed hungry tonight. In your analysis, I think you answered this earlier, do you consider the impact of these private volleyball facilities that are opening up around? I know of two here. We've got one in Pearland. There's one down the freeway in Clear Lake. Does your analysis include the impact of those?
It does.
Okay, all right. I'm kind of leaning toward a wait-and-see approach, Mayor, find out what this private developers going to do. I, I think that would be a dis, an injustice to our citizens if we spent more money looking into this without seeing how that's gonna play out. On, on the numbers for the, the economic impact of, of like the dining, obviously, and your revenue, you show dining and retail money being coming into the facility. And then you show a direct economic impact of the same things, the dining and the retail. Are we double counting here? I mean, if somebody goes to an eight-hour tournament, they could potentially eat at this facility twice. They're not gonna be spending that money out in the general public at our other restaurants. So it seems like there might be some double counting there on the retail and the, and the dining. Care to comment on that?
Yeah, we don't have a full-scale restaurant recommended for this facility. By the way, Eric Sullivan needs to drop off. I know he's got another council presentation coming up. So did you want to just give any word of closing real quick?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone so much for their time and appreciate the opportunity to serve Pearland and look forward to continue next steps.
So to answer, yeah, sorry. So to answer your question directly, we don't have a full-scale restaurant. It's more of a grab-and-go and concessions-type option. So yes, we do expect some of those people will have one, possibly even two meals per day. But the goal here is to be additive to and not competitive with your, the rest of your businesses. So it won't be in direct competition with restaurants, but we still need to have a great atmosphere for people because they will be there for four to six hours throughout most days on tournaments. We need to get them something that they can eat without having them have the, you know, the team dining experience within the facility. So it's not double counted. Those are separate numbers. And we actually reduce the daily, the daily food expenditure to account for spending within the facility that would come out of their daily food expenditure.
Okay, I guess the last thing. From 2019 analysis to the 2021, the amount of revenue jumped almost 250%. I know some of that is because you're looking at a larger facility and some of it's inflation, but what other comment do you have as far as how the revenue went up that much in two years?
Yeah, sorry. So the revenue increases by a lot closer to 18%. It's the, it's the bottom line number that you may be looking at, the EBITDA that increases pretty significantly. But EBITDA in 2019 in the, so that's the operational cash flow, was $922,000 in our projections. It's $1.33 million. So that's a difference of $400,000. It's about a 50% increase.
What we're talking about is the economic impact. It went from in 2019,
Economic impact.
Five million, $5.6 million to over 14.7, just two years later.
Yeah, so, so two components really driving that. And, and you're right, that is about 250%. One of them is just having more volume, right? We have 33% more tournaments. We're sorry, more tournament capacity. But the second is really about the operational strategy of maximizing economic impact. Previously, because you do have so many people in Pearland and so many people in Houston who would not be non-local to this complex, we modeled that as we would see them coming in. And in this model, we actually have recommended that if you want to maximize economic impact, you have a max number of teams, usually about 20% of your teams can be local and then the rest have to be non-local. So you'll have a signup period just for your local teams and then everyone else has to be non-local. And that change in and of itself drives a significant difference in the number of non-local visitors because you are not filling up with your locals first. And that was, again, that's a model to make sure that, that's just for tournaments, that those tournaments are maximizing their impact on your community from an economic standpoint.
Sorry, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmember Carbone?
All right. On the pro forma, are, are we assuming that all the, the room nights are here local to Pearland?
So there's a, there's Um, so there's a, there, there's a conservative, uh, level to look at the leakage. Um, so part of what we do is we decrease the total number of non-locals from what we think they actually would be to account for people who won't be staying in Pearland. And to be candid, if they don't stay in Pearland, they're much more likely to spend their restaurant money outside of Pearland. Um, so there is a factor in that to decrease. So it's not just purely everyone and a hundred percent of them are captured. There's actually a, a reduction factor to that.
Okay. Um, when I look at this, and the net financial impact, best case scenario at the end of five years, just to make sure I'm reading this right, we're, best case scenario, we're stroking a, a check for a little over a million dollars on an annual basis. And we're hoping that we've got, I guess, new, new cash coming in from tax revenue of four hundred K for a net, call it seven hundred? Is that?
Yeah, so, um, operationally, it, uh, it, it breaks even in profits. But if you add in debt service, which by the way, if this was a parks and recreation facility, normally you wouldn't add debt service to your operating, uh, to your operating total. I'm not, not sure if you are currently for your, um, rec center and aquatic center. But, um, that does include debt service. And so very clear expectation, we want you to hear, if you build this, you should not expect it to cover its own debt service. But operationally, it can cover all of its expenses and contribute toward the retirement of debt service. But it will not cover the full debt service. Um, that's, that's just not the industry and the model that you'd be looking at.
Okay, so when we get to the fifth year, there's a net financial impact. I mean, we're, we're stroking a check to somebody for a million bucks.
Yeah, so, so yes, those numbers from a net financial impact perspective, uh, the, the net financial impact in year five is six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, uh, subsidy.
Right. And, and, I mean, the, the, right above that, the four hundred and five thousand, you call it new tax revenue? That's kind of the, I guess, the, the sales tax impact of the direct.
Yeah, so that is the sales tax that comes from that direct spending. Um, so we've added that back in. Net financial impact is something we use to share with the community rather than EBITDA or operating cash flow minus capital replacement minus debt service equals net operating income. Uh, we then look at what your return on that, um, tax revenue generation would be and add that in. So yes, um, it would be a little over a million dollars, but you'd be getting four hundred and five thousand dollars in new tax revenue, um, through your taxing structure, uh, that would be there.
Okay. And it sounds like to squeeze the most economic impact out of this, I mean, we're limiting the, the local users, um, at least in the tournament standpoint. And then what, seventy percent of the revenue is going to come from taxpayers? For the, for the, during the week, right? So I mean, that's a, it's still, my opinion, it's still a tough sell. And we're going to say, we're going to subsize this to a million bucks. You live here, you're not getting a break. You're, you're going to have to pay more than your fair share as well and sign up fast because your local teams are, are limited. I mean, it's still a tough sell in my mind. Um, not saying no, but, um, still, still a tough sell. And I would like to see what the private developer is going to do. Um, I can't, I don't want to get into, uh, a slippery slope of trying to get out there and, and we compete as a government entity against a private developer. Um, I think we should, should work to team up with them, um, not, not compete or undercut. Because no matter which way we go, we're not getting ad valorem tax off this. So on a private development, I mean, that, that's going to be an additional bottom line. So, yeah, those are my comments, Matt.
All right, uh, Matt, I don't know if you, uh, got direction on if EDC should move forward with phase three. I know there was some specific comments to move forward on, on phase three. Um, my question on this phase three support services, what, what type of a price tag is that for EDC to undertake?
You know, yeah, I, I guess, um, and maybe Evan can answer too. It would, you know, obviously depend on how, what kind of scope we put together with them. But you know, probably fifty to seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, depending on, you know, it really becomes about how much time they're going to spend and how long we're going to work on it. Evan, do you want to, you know, discuss that at all?
Yeah, I'll just confirm that. There are a lot of different structures. We take an approach that you, um, you use us for what you need us for, and you may not need us for all that much. So sometimes it's much less than that. Sometimes we just do it on an hourly basis, pay us as you need as we go. Other times it's a monthly retainer basis. But, um, Matt, your number is in line with our previous conversation. That's, that's in the range of what it is on average.
And again, that was a number that I understand doesn't have to come back here, but obviously you guys are looking for guidance. You know, uh, this is what I talked about earlier, and I wanted to be, you know, transparent with you guys. I mean, this was a request that came in just recently on the private side. So I think it, it warrants you guys knowing this, this is out there. Certainly if we, you know, went all the way out and we took this to a vote and everything else, we'd have to, we'd have to know where that is. Personally, I, I, I think it's, it's warranted to see what the private guy is doing. Let the council see that. Again, that's not financed and he's not pulled a building permit. Uh, but we need to know where and what that is doing. Regardless of the location, I think we, 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 we owe that to take a look at it. Um, so it may be, you know, that we take this phase three and we, we wait a couple of months just to see and vet out what's happening on the private side and then come back and give direction. The other thing I'd like to, to know from, I guess, Evan's point of view, we, we've looked at multiple financing. This would be the city taking up COs or GOs. This could be the EDC bearing that. With, with sales tax dollars and, and, and being, I guess, our buffer, lack of a better term, uh, in that. Um, uh, it seems like it could also be, uh, this, this delta of a million a year could be borne by the EDC, not the city. I think that structure could be any number of things. Uh, and if I understand this phase three, part of that would be that plan coming back. A, B, or C, or D, E, or F, depending on how many that we could come up with, if I understand it. So, um, so anyway, it might be that we just need to get a better look at what, uh, the private guy is going to do. I will tell you from what I've seen in the packet, it's, it's not as large a facility as this. Um, it's going to be, and, and my question would be whether or not it really supports sanction events and those types of things. But, um, uh, it's more of about an eighty thousand square foot facility. But it does have, you know, the same number of basketball, same number of volleyball. But again, I don't know if that's how that looks from spectators and those types of things. So I think it might be that, that it, it warrants us taking a look at it. If we've got a private investor looking to do that, it might be a true private, public-private partnership with them and the city. Maybe we are able to upsize it to a, to a better, better, uh, support what we're talking about. So, uh, like I said, I'm not sure if you got clear direction on that, but it might be that we need to sit, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety days and see what's going to happen on the private side and engage them to see where we go. Also know that this could be, you know, constructed and done by private folks with a lease back to us. And as I understand it, this financial support service phase three would, would take a look at that as well, right? All right. Um, so with that, I, I do want to move towards, I know we all need to take a quick break, uh, be back in here at six-thirty. Um, and so I'd like to move forward in our agenda. Uh, Evan, thank you, uh, for this. Mr. Cam Card, you unmuted. Did you have something real quick?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right, good deal. Uh, so with that, I'm going to, I guess, move on in our agenda to, there is no other business, uh, no other mayor council issues before us. And so I'm going to move to adjournment at six oh seven and ask staff, go ahead and, and do forward what information is coming forward to pre-development on the, um, on the private side. Let's, uh, try to reconvene back in here at six-thirty. I know that's, uh, quick.